Okay, let me welcome everyone to the town hall. Hopefully, most of you know I'm State Senator Paul Pinsky. I am zooming from my home. Was able to get out of Annapolis by six and seven last night. We usually do this in December during normal years at Lamont Elementary. Obviously, this reflects the very different and difficult times we're living in. So I want to thank all of you for joining us. We are going to try to keep this tight to sixty or seventy-five minutes. Spending many hours a day on Zoom, it can be tiring and exhausting. And you probably want to break from that over the weekend. So we're not going to have this going interminably. So we're going to have to balance your time and comfort with questions. We will have questions for Dr. Carter. And after I present what's happening in Annapolis, and you will use a chat feature to forward your question to our staff, who will then either or who will then either read it or forward it to me. Look, as I said, this has been a year like no other. It's been a hundred years since the influenza of nineteen nineteen. And it's changed our lives. We see it every day. You have it as if you have children or grandchildren having to do education. In Annapolis, we actually go to Annapolis. And when we're on the floor of the Senate, we sit in little telephone booths. And I have to explain to these young people what a telephone booth is. Because it's a foreign concept. We wear masks, we get tested twice a week. And knock on wood, so far, no one has had any kind of outbreak or problem with the pandemic. So again, it's affected all of our lives for almost a year now. Probably eleven months for many of us. Today, what we hope to do is to start off with Dr. Ernest Carter, who's the Chief Health Officer Director for the County of Prince George's, to talk about COVID treatment, response, what's happening in the county. We will take allow some questions for Dr. Carter. I've already had one or two emailed in, and I know there'll be some more on the chat line. Then we'll thank Dr. Carter and let him go on to his other business. He's very busy. He's been doing these all over the county and Zooms probably more than I could count. Then I will present what's been happening in Annapolis legislative issues, the COVID relief package, police accountability, Kerwin in schools, climate change, and other initiatives that are taking place. And then we'll open up the questions on any interesting questions you have regarding what's happening in Annapolis. We're a little over a third the way through the ninety-day session. And as some of you might know, last year, we had to end it early because of the pandemic. Hopefully, we can avoid that this year. And then we'll open up the Q and A, and then we'll wrap it up. So that's that's our plan. Again, thank all of you for joining us. And with that, before I introduce Dr. Carter, I want to make one comment about the pandemic response. There's been a lot of debate, how much responsibility is on the county? How much is on the state? And of course, the federal government. The federal government was was late in handling this while they knew it was going to happen. And we had all kinds of promises that the vaccine would be shipped within hours. There have been major, major problems and shortages. And education at the national level, as can be seen from a lot of comments Dr. Fauci and others are sharing. So we have a new administration in Washington, which should greatly help. And I must say, last week or the week before, the Acting Secretary of Health, when asked a question of, you know, there are all these different platforms to sign up to get the vaccine. What should we do? Is there going to be one platform? He said, well, sign up on as many as you can. And then when you get your appointment, cancel the rest. I feel that's unsatisfactory. I think we should have had a centralized system built for that could work its way down to each county and locale. I don't think people who have more time and technology and versatility to get on five or six platforms and have the time or different websites to sign up should have an advantage over other people who might not have that time or that technology. So I think it's been a major problem in the state rollout. That doesn't excuse any problem we may have had on the local level. And I think Dr. Carter will hear suggestions if they can be implemented as we go forward. He knows the disease. He's a doctor. He works with the county executive before the county executive. We have numerous sites at the Prince George's across from the hospital, the Sports and Learning Complex, and now we have the Six Flags location. So with that, let me hand it over to Dr. Carter. If we could unmute him, that would be great. Dr. Carter, you may unmute yourself possibly. I'm not sure. Now, Susan, can we unmute Dr. Carter?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Welcome.
Thank you, Senator Pinsky. Thank you. Thank you very much. And good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for having me today. I really appreciate it. And I want to thank your constituents for coming on this call. This is a great time to learn about this historic moment. And I know that there has been a lot of things that are happening. And just to start out, I just want to start by briefly giving you an update on the COVID nineteen virus in the county. The virus is still spreading at a fairly high rate, but we're seeing a significant decrease in our metrics. And that's and that's really, really good news. Cases have trended down. Last week, we were at about a thousand two hundred and forty-five new cases. And that's a significant drop over the last few weeks. However, we're still above a thousand new cases per week. Since and that's still above where we were in October. We continue to be below the critical level for our daily case rate, which is really great. The critical area is above twenty-five. We're now below that. We're at eighteen. For the positivity rate, the seven-day average shows that the percent of positive COVID cases coming back positive in the county has declined to five point five percent. And that's really good because we were headed in the wrong direction for several weeks. So that puts us at the cusp of being just at the high transmission rate. And we feel that that's going to decrease over the next several weeks with the caveat of knowing that if these other variants should occur, the ones that are very high in terms of infection, that could push us back up. But right now, all of the signs look good. Our infection rate has dropped down as well. It is at point eight, and that's really, really great. It's less than one, it's less than point nine. And so still, and still, we still have some, a lot of folks being hospitalized. As of yesterday, we had a hundred and thirty-one people. But that's a big reduction down from the two eighteen we had just two weeks ago. So we're doing fairly well. I mean, and we have, we've seen our hospitals really step up and help us do this, get through this fight. So while we're seeing these decrease in our numbers, we're still in the fight though. And it's really important to understand that these variants are out there. They're in the United States. At least seven variants are in the United States. We want to be sure that we keep ourselves very much doing the things that that you have to do to keep yourself safe. And that's, and I can't overemphasize that. And one of those ways is to get vaccinated. And I know you all, this, you all know that is very, very important. Each week, the county makes good progress on vaccinating as many people as we can and as safely and equitably as we can. So far, we vaccinated over fifty-two thousand folks in Prince George's County. That's the total of everybody vaccinated, getting at least the first dose. There's, there's a growing list of public and private vaccination clinics open in the county that I know you all know. The Health Department is building its vaccination capacity each week. We operate four vaccination sites now across the county. The past week, we opened the fourth one at the Laurel Belt Field Senior Center. Remember, we're still in phase one, which prioritizes people based on the older, their older age and their occupation. That puts them at higher risk, as you all well know. Right now, the Health Department is focused on vaccinating the remainder of people in phase one and one A and one B. And you know, phase one A includes frontline health workers and first responders. Phase one B includes our seniors, seventy-five years old and older, as well as our teachers and our school staff. It also includes those who are in assisted living facilities and other conjugate living facilities over seventy-five. We're very, we're very close to scheduling everyone in one A and one B who has pre-registered in the county. Once we have scheduled those in one A and one B, then we'll move to scheduling vaccination appointments for those who have pre-registered in phase one C. Phase one C includes those who are sixty-five and older, and we are prioritizing those folks when we start vaccination in that phase. The Health Department pre-registration form can be found at this website, health, H E A L T H dot my P G C dot U S forward slash COVID vaccine. This site also provides more details about various phases and the important updates. Making appointments for people are driven primarily by our vaccine supply. Demand for vaccine has outpaced our supply. And we, we're about a hundred and thirty thousand people on our pre-registration list at this point. Nationwide supply issues has forced us to make very quick adjustments to our operations and to our scheduling on a weekly and sometimes daily basis. For instance, the wintry weather this week slowed down vaccination distribution significantly. Because we didn't receive enough vaccine this week, we had to postpone thousands of first-dose appointments. Unfortunately, we had, we've been mindful, we have to be mindful. Well, fortunately, I should say, we've been mindful of our second dose supply. So, so we're able to keep our second dose appointments this week and next week. Those who have first-dose appointments that were canceled will receive a new appointment for the week of February twenty eighth. With each vaccine dose administered, every day, we get closer to our goal. We're working toward getting at least sixty-five percent of our eligible population vaccinated in the summer and about eighty percent by the fall. I'm encouraged that Johnson and Johnson vaccine is getting closer to the emergency use authorization. I'm encouraged by seeing these other vaccines that are coming to play and what's happening with the Biden administration, being able to push vaccine and come up with a decent distribution plan. So with that, I think I'll end. But I just want to be sure and to reassure you all that the county is doing everything it can to make sure that everybody gets this, get the dose that they should get. Make, we're working with our partners much more. At least, it's good news that our partners are stepping up to help us much more like Lumina's Healthcare and all of our hospital systems. And so with that, I think I will end and answer any questions. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, okay, Doctor. I'm sorry, we had a little technical glitch. I've got, I've got a bunch. The first one is, if someone is in one A or one B and has not gotten a shot, how do they get put to the top of the line if they're having trouble signing up for a shot? I mean, in other words, how, is it, if they simply go to the website, which I think I've also included in my last electronic newsletter? If they go to that website and they are in one A or one B, either by their age or in long-term care or teacher, will they automatically be given priority?
The short answer to that is yes. So when you go to the website, you actually pre-register. You don't, that's not a registration, that's a pre-registration. And to tell you the truth, the reason we had to do that is because the PrEP mod system that the state was using was just totally inadequate for what we're trying, what we needed to get done. So we went to a pre-registration system so that we can see who is in one A. We'll make sure the people who get pre-registered, they're in one A or one B, they're at the top of the line. We are giving out appointments to those who are in one A and one B, even starting this week because we're switching from that PrEP mod system over to our electronic medical record until a better system can be had, either the state or that we purchased, so that we can do better with how this scheduling is occurring. So right, we're using our electronic medical record and the manual process, which we're, this weekend, we're taking tens of thousands of people from the pre-registration list and making sure they get appointments first and second, prioritized according to one A and one B.
So on that, we just got a question. Somebody said, I am one B. I was notified that I am on the list. How do we know that we are still on the list and will be scheduled?
You're going to, what you'll, what will happen is you will get in, in your, from your email, if we have, or if you've been contacted by phone, you will know, the next message you get from us is the message that says you have an appointment. It'll give you an appointment, first and second appointment. What we're, what our county executive charged us with is to make sure that everybody who got on that pre-registration list and everybody who's in one A and one B will get a first and second appointment. And we will send you a notification as to when those days are. And we're trying to also make sure, which the PrEP mod system didn't do, let know that they are still on the, on the list, like the pre-registration list, et cetera. So we have an army of people this weekend working to be sure that people are, A, reassured that they are still on the, on the pre-registration list, and number two, that they are getting appointments.
And roughly, Dr. Carter, the waiting list for one A and one B, how many are still outstanding roughly, if we have a ballpark on that?
Right now, in the pre-register, well, for one A and one B, there are about ninety-five to a hundred thousand people in one A and one B in Prince George's County. And one A, one B, and one C is about two hundred and seventy thousand folks. Registration list, as we have it now, we have about a hundred and thirty thousand people on there. But some of those people are from one C that are mixed in. So we have to make sure we take, you know, we prioritize, as we said before. But there are a lot of people on the list. There are a lot of folks on our pre-registration list.
So if they're ninety-five to a hundred thousand of one A and one B, again, we all hope the Johnson and Johnson come through soon. And I think that's a one-dose vaccine. How many are we doing a week? I mean, people are trying to figure out, is this going to be two weeks or two months or two years?
Well, the, right now, our county, from the, just the county, not departments, just the county, we're able to do about two thousand a day. And our partners are able to do anywhere from two thousand to three thousand a day. You know, it'll, it'll be, you can, from that math, you can, you can say, oh, yeah, it's going to be, it'll take us a little while to get through all of those. But you know, the state opened up a mass back site and helps us as a county. And just this weekend, some of our county, some of our partners have opened up even larger sites. And as, as time goes by, you'll see us opening up more and more sites to be able to take care of volume. So ultimately, we know we need to get to the point where we're doing somewhere on the order of, as a county, around forty to fifty thousand doses a day. We're getting closer to that every week. But right now, it doesn't matter because the supply is limited. We don't get, we don't get the vaccine we need right now to vax, to be able to vaccinate one A and one B. If we had the vaccine, we would be through that list. Period. But it's, we haven't gotten the vaccine. We get very little. We're only guaranteed nine hundred and seventy-five doses a week. You can imagine, that's not going to cut it.
But between the part-
About four, four, five, we've been averaging about three to five thousand. But this last week, we haven't gotten any.
But between the county and the partners in the state, you estimate three to five thousand a day, roughly?
Yeah, roughly, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we estimate three to five thousand a day, and that's minimum. We gotta do, we, we're going to do much better than that. I mean, but because we feel that we'll be in the six to seven thousand range very quickly as we keep opening sites and as our partners open sites. Right now, the Health Department is, as I said, around two thousand a day. And our partners are around that too, about two, three thousand a day.
Okay, so then, using those metrics, we should be able to get through one A and one B in twenty days or so?
We should be if there's supply. It just hasn't been, the supply isn't there.
Right. Let me, let me move on there. The questions keep coming, and I'm sure you're used to that.
Yeah.
Some people don't have email. And is there a telephone way people can handle this? Somebody writes, I've been helping people register who don't have email. Would it be possible to make more telephone registration lines available?
Yes, and that's our three-one-one. If they call three-one-one, that we, we have telephone registration. We also have our community relationship. Out to register people onsite in many sites across the county, and they're going to double their efforts. But we have, we do have three-one-one. And, and we are, we have, we actually have increased the number of people who are there now. And we are increasing that every day also. But that should be the way to get there.
Telephone operators to handle those calls?
Yes, yes. And those, as, as those calls come in. Now, from what I understand, I can get back to you as to how many operators they have. I'm not sure about that.
Right. Let me ask you another question. A number of people have asked about comorbidity, people who have other health problems, whether it be diabetes, hypertension, or even asthma for that matter. Two questions. One, how does that fit in in terms of the phase one and phase two? And then, secondly, when someone goes in, are they going to be asked to prove it? And, you know, look, we want the people who have actual problems to be helped. You know, are there always some outliers who want to go to the head of the line and say, yes, I'm sick and I need this? Have you started to figure out how you're going to deal with people with other comorbidity going forward?
So-
First question is, when do they fit in in terms of the phases? And the second is, how do you deal with it?
Well, where the people who have those factors, those comorbidities that make them at high risk, they are at the head of the line of one, right there in one C. And they're, they're right between one C and in phase. And they, they actually sit right at the place where, where, right below those sixty-five-year-olds, then you get to those people who have comorbidities. And, and so, you know, with the, the way they have prioritized, they come in right there at phase one C, sort of like between phase one C and then right in phase two. And hopefully, when we, we can go through those, we can get to those people very quickly because I'm concerned about them. The, they have the, they stratify it like they have done. And that, that was done at the federal level and then interpreted by the state and ultimately got to us, is because you do it by who's, who is most likely to die if hospitalized. And they ended up in ICU. And it turns out, the seventy-five-year-olds and older have a two out of five chance of death if they get into the ICU and have to be intubated. If you're sixty, if you're between that next, if you go down to that next level of sixty-five-year-old, then their chances are one in five. You get to the comorbidities, then it goes down even further. So that's why they're sort of stratified that way. That's where, that's, that's where they fit in. In my mind, I'm trying to get as many people there as quickly as I can. Now, to be able to verify whether or not you have heart disease or whether you have kidney disease or whether you're immunocompromised. This, at, at the beginning, at least right now, the state and the federal government are taking that as good, of good faith, as good faith, that when you, when we're asked, you're telling us the truth. We don't verify that against your electronic medical record. We don't do those things. It's not clear. And I know I haven't gotten clear guidance from the state how to actually make sure that if you say you have heart disease, you have it. So when, when that comes, because we haven't gotten to that stage yet, we need, we're asking for clarity.
Okay, no, thank you. That's helpful. Let me, again, we've got, hopefully, you can stay a couple more minutes. Someone raised a question that they have, on occasion, not all the time, because they get other immunizations, that, once they've gone into anaphylactic shock. And, and the question becomes, is there one location that's better than another in terms of if there is an emergency? I mean, I understand all of your people are trained. But for example, is Prince George's Clinic better than the Sports and Learning Complex? Because you're near a hospital? I mean, please.
Yeah, no, I'll tell you. So, well, we're equipped at Sports and Learning and any of our sites to be able to handle any emergency. You know, we work with our fire EMS folks to be, to get you there and get you there quickly. And as you know, if you have an anaphylactic reaction, the first, the first line of defense is to make sure we get some epinephrine into you. And then that's the, that's the most important thing. And then to make sure that you've gotten a shot, that we observed you long enough to be sure that you don't have an anaphylactic reaction. So you have to, so if you ask me the best place, of course, we, at the Health Department and our health partners, who are hospital systems, are equipped for that. Now, I'm sure that the pharmacies are also equipped with, with a line two fire EMS and rescue. I speak for them. I know I could speak for the Health Department, and I can speak for our hospital systems in terms of that. So now, with people who have, do have anaphylactic reactions, turns out with this particular shot, it's not, if you're allergic to shellfish or if you're allergic to peanuts or, or even penicillin, it turns out that the people who have the most severe allergic reactions to this shot are allergic to an ingredient in the shot itself. And it's usually an ingredient that, it's a specific ingredient that most, a lot of people are, get allergic to. And you have to be careful. And if you know, if you have allergy, if you had an allergic reaction after you get a shot, period, you should be, you should consult your doctor before you go to where to get a shot. Because that's, because that's an important thing. And we would have to know that and be able to observe you. Even when people tell us they have allergies to other things, we observe them for a longer period of time than we do that a person who doesn't have any. The most important thing is, and with this shot, there has been nobody who has died from this shot. There's nobody who's been hospitalized from this shot. To date, in the United States, the only two cases that I know of is in the UK, where we had, there were two people who had a severe allergic reaction to it.
Well, that's good news. I have about three more. Well, I've got a lot of questions. I'm going to maybe ask you to do two or three more.
Sure.
I just lost my train of thought for the first one. Could you briefly explain what phase two, phase, as you said, phase one C are sixty-five and older and people with comorbidity? Very briefly, could you tell the folks what phase two and three are?
Oh, phase, yeah. Well, phase two and three, well, basically, are every, phase two is all of the essential workers who are left. This phase two also includes, because there's going to be a significant overlap between phase one C and phase two. So there's going to be still people with comorbidities, et cetera, still going to be getting vaccinated, doing that overlap. But, but phase, phase two basically is making sure that all of the other essential workers, like the folks who are in, who work in grocery stores and restaurants. And if you go to our website, you, we actually list all of that out in, on the, on our website so that people can go back and review and see where we are. It changes, it changes, you know, because if the state or the federal government changes, it hasn't changed in a little bit now. But it does change every so often. But it doesn't really, it hasn't really changed recently. Two is sort of like all of the rest are high-risk. And then phase three is everybody else, is the general population. Basically, healthy young folks who have been vaccinated. And anybody, anybody else who hasn't been vaccinated in phase, it turns out that that's where the majority of folks are.
And, Doctor, the question came up, will we get to a point where local doctors will provide shots to their patients? Will it ever get decentralized to that extent? I know we're short of vaccinations and we're doing a large, critical mass of people. But is there any talk of giving it to, you know, internists or people's general practitioner?
Yes, that, you know, we are counting on the providers to get vaccination, to vaccinate their, their patients. We're absolutely, this is all a supply issue. Because if, under normal circumstances, if we had supply, the state would have supplied this to folks who are healthcare providers. As a matter of fact, my wife is a healthcare provider. And healthcare providers have to sign up to become vaccinators. You have to actually be certified to be a vaccinator. Almost every provider in Prince George's County and Montgomery County, almost all over, are certified to be vaccinators. They just haven't received any vaccine. And if they did, that would help us tremendously. I mean, we were, we were hoping that, you know, if the vaccine supply had been what it what it should be. Uh, we would, we would have, they would have already had vaccine and so would our urgent care and most all the other providers in the community. So that's a significant question. I'm glad you you brought that up because our providers are going to be a tremendous player in helping us make sure. This, we can vaccinate at at much higher rates than we are now.
Okay, uh, first, I believe in the chat, the website that Dr. Carter has referred to has been listed. Yeah, I did. I have to say, Dr. Carter, someone just said that they tried three one one. And it got bounced to the green belt police who said they couldn't help. So. It may be.
Well, it should. That that I will check into that because three one one is the number that they should be able to dial. To be able to to get a voice to them pre-register. So I will check on that as soon as I.
It could, it could be the quantity of calls is uh, of consuming the uh, the people responding. So if you could check.
I will.
Three one one and maybe with accounting executive on that. It, the question has been raised about teachers returning to school and not all have been vaccinated. I do know that the county has partnered with Kaiser Permanente to so. Uh, some people apparently are still frustrated not being able to get appointments. I know there are ten thousand or so teachers and another ten or fifteen thousand school employees. Um, that's a lot of folks. So, um, and unfortunately, they're probably still on the way to this. Is that correct, uh?
Well, this with the public school and private schools, we're we're really. Really trying our best and 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 throwing on all the stops to make sure they get vaccinated before they have to go back to school. At the public schools, the private schools, we're working with them and I want to be sure to to note that they are priority for us too. Um, but they're the, I think that um, our method for getting to the public schools was from the. It was a little different from how we're doing private schools, but I think that that has evolved. So that so that they'll make sure these private school teachers, as well as our public school teachers, get vaccinated. Um, it's it's a priority for us, especially for when schools will reopen. Now, I'm not clear as to when our schools are going to reopen and and those are, that's still being talked about. But when they do, what we, what we're trying to commit ourselves to is to make sure all our teachers vaccinated. All people who work in the school are vaccinated. And of course, they're not going to be because the vaccine hasn't been approved for them yet. But if we can get as many folks in that school system vaccinated as we can before opening, that's what we're going to try to do.
Okay, and I'm going to give the final question, but I've been told that when you call three one one, then you need to push pound. Um, and that's according to Dr. Carter's assistant. So it's not the three one one, then when you give it a menu, you are to push pound. Final clarification. I know this, I believe the state has announced one A, one B, one C. Prince George's County, however, is still in one A and one B, or are we in one C?
Well, when one Cs can pre-register, so we, you notice that we don't have any uh, phase two or phase three registering. We're letting everybody register. However, we're going to finish the one A and one Bs first, and then we'll get to the one Cs. So Cs will start to see appointments given to them because they, if they are already on our pre-registration list. We're going, once we get through all of the one A and one B appointments, we're going to go to the one C appointments. So that's where we are. So it's like, we're in a situation where we've got to be sure we get through our one A and one Bs because they're priority. And it's why I want to see. So if you go to the website and you pre-register. Then you are in the queue to get of an appointment for those and second dose of them.
Great. Look, Dr. Carter, we want to thank you for uh, sharing this knowledge information on a Saturday morning. So um, thank you very, very much. Uh, we know it's a challenge. It's a challenge to solve this problem. Uh, we know people have their, you know, their sleeves rolled up and are working very hard and a lot of hours. And I have been to a couple of facilities and people have been very gracious and very professional. So uh, I thank you and I'm sure we all thank you and and share that with your staff as well.
Thank you, Senator. I really appreciate it. And thank you to all your constituents. We appreciate your patience. We're going very hard to make sure we get through this.
Great, thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye bye. Uh, we're going to shift gears a little bit. We, I tried to cover as many as I could, uh, constituents, friends. I want to talk a little about the legislature. I said I don't want this to drag on too long. I've been on too many way, much too long zooms. Let me talk about the legislature. It's very strange in Annapolis. Uh, our public hearings are done virtually. So people uh, testify from home. The legislators testify from their offices in Annapolis. And then when we have a voting session in my committee that I chair, for example, education, health, and environment. We um, we do it in the committee room. There's plexiglass between the desks. We wear masks. Uh, we don't eat, so we don't have to take off our masks. We keep it limited in a couple of hours so the air can circulate. And on the floor of the Senate, we meet three times a week. We were meeting twice a week. Uh, and we are in these, and you've probably seen pictures of these uh, three sided or four sided plexiglass stalls around our desks. And we wear masks. And so far, while strange, we have been able to move legislation. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue to do this as time goes on. And our staff gets tested once a week. We get tested twice a week. And senators don't, aren't allowed on the on the chamber floor unless they can show a negative test result. Uh, and we get um, rapid and um, the PCR tests as well. Let me talk about, I'm going to mention four or five issues, then we'll open it back up for questions and I want to hear from you. Our first bit of business was our COVID relief package. We know that's a pressing question on everyone's mind. It's affecting them greatly. Uh, for the, for the very poorest among us, we wanted to supplement uh, income. So there's a five hundred dollar benefit. Benefit, uh, support assistance, financial. To people uh, of extremely low income. We, unemployment has been a mess statewide. Uh, my staff does a great job in trying to sort out the cases, but. The State Department uh, has been very ineffective. Uh, they've gotten a little better. Some cases drag on. So part of the COVID relief package. Was that people where the case was not resolved quickly, but were in dire straits because of lack of income. Uh, they would receive a thousand dollar check to help. There are more and additional grants for small businesses. A lot of our local businesses that I know many of us are trying to keep afloat in order from whether it be food or or other items. Uh, there is an area for grants there as well. So. We did put a COVID relief package in. Uh, the governor uh, did some good things. Uh, we supplemented it. We made it bipartisan, uh, and that was signed into law and those checks should be going out soon. This week, we have another very important and crucial issue, and that's police accountability. While we all have seen multiple times the George Floyd tape. And some people have gotten more attuned to other uh, black and brown people who have been harmed by it by police officers. Uh, in those communities, they've been experiencing it for more than two years. It's more like twenty or two hundred years. It's a problem and a lot of our police officers are are decent and honest and play by the rules and unfortunately, some don't. Uh, but a lot of the laws on the books are ones that protect some of the bad apples, to be honest with you. And that's got to change. And the Judicial Proceedings Committee chaired by Will Smith from Tacoma Park, chairman. Uh, is going to present, I believe, nine bills uh, next week to address these very concerns. Uh, we we have to change the behavior. We have to see police as helpers in the community, not an occupying force. Um, so changes are needed and they're long overdue. I'm not going to go into the eight or nine bills, but uh, we can show you where to. Get on the MGA website, Maryland General Assembly website, if you want to track legislation. We also had to override a number of vetoes from the gov- governor. And one, which I've worked long and hard with for three or four years, or in fact, over forty years. Is the Education Reform Act called the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, also called the Kerwin Commission Report. That is a ten year phase into transform our schools. To help pre-K and expand pre-kindergarten. To ensure that all students, no matter what zip code, by third grade or grade uh, reading level. So that means intense tutoring between kindergarten and third grade. It talks about raising the academic standards and the expectations for all students to have a a world-class curriculum. So by tenth grade, they have met the graduation standards and for their last two years, they can start taking. Either um, college credit courses or takes or take career technology courses. So they can actually enter with uh, certification or be pre-prepared for um, apprenticeships. Uh, we want to have as many pathways as possible so our students are successful. Uh, as many uh, of you have shared with, when we were benchmarked across the world. The United States came in the middle of the pack of the industrialized nations. And thirty or forty, fifty years ago, we were number one. We have fallen considerably and others have moved forward. And that's based on outcomes. That's based on the PISA test. So it's not a guess or anecdotal evidence. Within the United States, there's a test called the NAEP test, which is an apples-to-apples kind of assessment. Uh, Maryland came in the middle of the pack. And while the education, we called us number one some years ago. Uh, in terms of outcomes, what students can do, uh, we came in the middle of the pack. So we want to make our schools world-class. And as I said on the floor of the Senate last week or the week before. We want to raise the bar for all students. At the same time, we need to close the gap between those students who are underperforming. So it's not just a matter of raising the bar and leave everyone behind. Or just closing the gap and not pushing all students to get even uh, even further improved and knowledgeable, but it's to do both. The governor vetoed that bill. So uh, about a week and a half ago, we overrode that veto. Now, we've been set back a year, another year. Because he didn't include all the money that's required in the bill after he vetoed it. So instead of starting in the twenty-two year. Um, some of the programs are going to be pushed back to uh, fiscal year twenty-three. Now, some of the programs are funded. We're going to move forward. And while we we have the Kerwin back on track, albeit uh, belated. Um, the COVID has pushed students back even further. And it's been a great deal of learning loss. Uh, students, whether they live in Potomac. Or if they live in uh, Capitol Heights, uh, have lost learning. And among some students, it's probably a three-month learning loss and and others is probably as much as a year. So we need an injection immediately. So for that reason, there'll be legislation to expand tutoring, not just for K to three, but for K to twelve and also expanded summer school. And hopefully, that will go uh, this coming summer and all of next year. So there can be pull-out programs. Tutoring to get as many students as possible back on track. Let me mention one other bill or or issue. And again, I can't mention the thousands of bills that were introduced. Uh, or some that are still being considered in committees. Uh, I've had the honor to uh, be the lead sponsor of the Climate Solutions Now Act. Besides the pandemic and besides the recent presidential race. The other issue that is consuming media is climate, whether it's fires in California. Flooding in uh, New Orleans or coastal regions. Or two weeks ago, we saw possibly two hundred people dying in India because of a glacier. Fell off because it had melted and went into a river, which flooded and drowned people. Climate is a problem. It's not white people problem, it's not a black people problem, it's not a brown people problem, it's a people problem. And if it's not addressed, we're going to see thousands of people die. It's not just some kind of ephemeral issue. It's very real. Uh, New York Times talked about climate migration. Whole groups of people having to move because of either rising sea level or flooding or storms. And the statistics are obvious. We've all seen them and read them. Six of the hottest years on record, on record. So they haven't been keeping them forever, but at least for the last, you know, almost two hundred years. Six of the last of the hottest years came in the last seven years. I mean, there's a trend. We know it. It has implications. And closer to home in Maryland, beside flooding in Annapolis and South Point in Baltimore. And and in September, that big rain along Route fifty and Cambridge, Cambridge on the eastern shore. We're finding what's called saltwater intrusion getting into the farmland on the eastern shore. And you can't grow crops when you have salt in the water. So it's actually beginning to affect farmers' ability to raise foodstuffs. So it's very real and the administration has been dragging their feet and talking good game, but not doing anything. So for those reasons, um, I I've introduced, after talking with architects, environmentalists. Labor, lots of people, the Climate Solutions Act. And I'm proud to say it passed out of my committee yesterday, not last night around six or seven o'clock. Uh, we'll go to budget tax and be on the floor of the Maryland Senate in the next two weeks. What does it do? Very briefly. You know, the state needs to lead by example. They have a fleet of cars. Every agency has a fleet of cars. There is absolutely no reason. When a car reaches its life cycle, it's not replaced with an electric vehicle. We have to lead. We have to show the state these work. We can use them. It's better for the environment. The bill requires us by twenty thirty to replace every car with electric vehicles. Uh, it also sets a a higher bar going forward. We need to reduce greenhouse gases by sixty percent by twenty thirty. That's what the science tells us. That's what the International Panel on Climate Change says. If we want to stay below one point five degrees centigrade, which could be the turning back, the no turning back point. We need to be net neutral by twenty forty-five. We need to plant trees. They absorb carbon dioxide and the bill calls for planting five million trees across the state. And ten percent of those in urban areas. Uh, urban areas that have been disproportionately affected by climate change. And have not received the kind of mitigation that they deserve. So ten percent, five hundred thousand trees. Uh, are to be planted in urban areas and begin to redevelop a tree canopy in those areas. Um, building codes, there is no reason these large, this new new buildings can't be uh, net neutral. Can't use new creative ways to be more efficient with their energy. Buildings that are are underwritten to some degree by the state. There's no reason they can't be net neutral or have solar panels on their roofs. We address all of those issues in the Climate Solutions Now Act. Does it solve all of our problems? It doesn't. Uh, we call together people to look at environmental justice. Why are some communities underserved? What are those communities? And how can we invest more money to um, effectuate the the disproportionality that they've experienced? We also have to have a a discussion in our in our state and actually across the nation. Of how do we shift our economy from a fossil fuel-based economy to a green economy? Some people may be displaced in their jobs. What is the state, what does society owe them? Is retraining enough if they're making seventy thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars? And all of a sudden, they have a job that makes twenty-five thousand dollars? They are important questions and our working families deserve the better answer. So we calling together all the stakeholders. Labor, management, state government, community colleges. All the communities to have a conversation to lay out another blueprint for how we proceed in that transition. So the bill is a fifty-three, maybe fifty-five page bill. Uh, you can get it on the website. I can't control the House of Delegates, but after it passes the Senate, it's going to go to the House of Delegates. And we will need your support uh, to move that bill. And I know a lot of environmental groups have worked on it as well. There are many other bills that you might have followed. I have not addressed. I don't want to monopolize the time. So um, let's move to some questions. I said it didn't want to take us long past sixty minutes or seventy-five minutes. It's now ten twenty-three. Um, so let's take ten or twenty minutes of questions that you may have. Uh, how do you fit schools of performance arts into the eleventh and twelfth grade plans towards career readiness? Currently, ladies and gentlemen. Currently, ladies and gentlemen, if you receive a high school diploma, that does not automatically mean you are college-ready or career-ready. Many students still need remediation when they get to a two-year, four-year institution. And many people still need apprenticeships and retraining if they go into the work world. That's a problem. So we first have to get our standards to such that high school diploma means you are ready for the work world or the college world and won't need remediation. But what we suggested and recommended in the Kerwin Report was that we actually don't wait till 12th grade, but move that down to 10th grade. So then, in the last two years of high school, students can pursue other advanced opportunities. And I believe that's where performing arts comes in. And I know, I'm not sure we asked that question. We want to have more college-level courses. We want to have more apprenticeships in career technology. And we need to have more programs for the arts, that people want to go into the art, whether it's painting, or drama, or dance, or whatever it might be. We need to have those kind of opportunities as well into the, the school programs. And, and the other part of this that I didn't mention, because we are short of time, is we have to attract and retain the best and brightest to go into teaching. Many people who are now doctors, lawyers, 40 years ago, would have been educators. They now have new opportunities and more opportunities. But we have to see it, a career that pays well, gives professional time for planning and thought time. And we have to make a high, create a higher bar for people entering the profession. We have a lot of great teachers, but we need to start to get people who might not have considered teaching to go into teaching. We need it. Will teaching be transformed? Have we learned anything from the remote learning? Of course, we have. As a former teacher, I know, seeing a student up close and seeing when they have a frown, or a smile, when that light goes off, or the confusion is evident, you can see it firsthand, and it gets a little lost on a, on a computer screen. So I, I think in terms of the performing arts, it should be included as well. Other questions you may have regarding the legislature or bills in front of us? I see a lot of health questions still out there. So if we can put some new ones up, that would be great. Somebody said the SNAP benefits have been increased, which is a godsend. They say, how long is this going to last? That's a federal issue. You know, there's an interplay between federal reforms, you know, they have done two CARES Act, and hopefully, there'll be another large investment from the Biden administration. And some of the December money has not even been disseminated and distributed yet. So we're hoping to have enough money to get people back to work, to give them benefits. And some of the proposed package from the Biden administration is also to backfill state and local municipal coffers that have been emptied over the last 10 or 12 months. We're going to shift from the script, and we're going to take a few live questions. Please keep them brief, and, and let's not get into date, but let's, let's try to ask questions and be succinct as we can. Mike Ficola has a question. Can we unmute him?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, this is probably also a federal question, but I wanted to bring to your attention that there was a number of, a number of us, myself included, who did not receive the second federal stimulus check, the one that was supposed to be $600. And the IRS is telling people to apply for a tax credit when they do their federal income tax in the next month or so. I just wanted to make you aware of that and see if there's, if there's been any other problems like that at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Ficola, if you would, contact my office, and, and we, we can contact the, our federal partners, Senator Van Hollen, Senator Cardin, and our congresspeople, Hoyer and Anthony Brown. So if there's any way we can expedite it, we will make every best effort to do that. Thank you for your question. We'll take a couple more, if there are any. We don't want to prolong this if people don't have questions, but we will take one or two more if we can. Ms. Nichols, Kimberly Nichols, can we unmute her, please? Not unmuted yet, Ms. Nichols.
Hello? Can you hear me?
You're live now. Thank you for joining us, ma'am.
Thank you. I was the person who asked the question about schools of the performing arts, because I have a daughter who was interested in becoming a dancer. And that was a lot easier when we had dance schools that were open. But as you know, COVID has closed most of the dance schools, including her own, which had been open for 22 years. So I was just wondering, you know, I got the, I was wondering what can be done in these COVID times to help these students that have now lost, you know, their schools of learning?
Yeah, Ms. Nichols, it's a very fair question. But at least in our county, it's affected 130,000 students. Special education students, students with special needs, where their teacher couldn't be there to help them, whether physical or emotional disability, people with unique talents, where they can't go to, say, Suluman School for the Performing Arts, or where they go. And our, our sons and daughters and grandsons and granddaughters, who are not getting the type of instruction they have. But, you know, I hate to use the term, there's no magic, magic bullet, because I don't want violence and guns. But we've had to make do. And this year's going to have an asterisk on it. I mean, and with no way, shape around that. We have lost so many, so many people. It's, it's, it's staggering. You know, for, for the people around the country who continue to deny there's a pandemic, it is, it astounds me. So I don't have an answer for you. I, I see we have been joined by Pamela Boozer Struthers, a school board member, representing Heights on a number of other areas. They're doing the best they can. I, I know the CEO, Dr. Golson, announced a return plan. It's complicated. You know, we want people back as soon as possible, but we want them safe. You know, teachers, and I understand it, say, everyone should be vaccinated with both vaccinations before they return. You read some studies that say that's not necessary. It's a balancing act. You know, if there's a simple pathway, we'd be following it. We want to make sure there's enough PP equipment, smaller classes, so there is some distance between children. You know, how many children can we get on a bus? And then if we have students come in for two days, do we then clean the building before the next group come in? You know, it's where, where, you know, they say you shouldn't, trying to fly an airplane when you're building it is pretty dangerous. And we're faced a very situation, ma'am. And, and I, my, my two children who went to public schools in the county are older now, so not seeing it first, feeling it firsthand. But our students are being short-changed this year, through no fault of our own, but because of this COVID. And we're going to have to make do, and it's going to mean some extra support afterwards. And we're going to try to make this up, but, you know, we're not in this alone. I mean, the whole, the whole world has been hit with, gripped with this. Let's take one more question, if there are any more. Okay, Ms. Matheson, can we unmute Ms. Matheson?
Yes, thank you. I read recently that there was, there are several states that are suing Maryland, or planning to sue Maryland regarding the tax on internet sales that they're proposing to partially, to partially fund the Kerwin Commission recommendations. Can you talk about that lawsuit? Does it have merit? And how would that revenue stream be impacted if we can't go forward with using that? How would the revenue stream for the, for the blueprint be impacted?
No, thank you. Thank you very much. That's a terrific question, Ms. Matheson. We passed last year two taxes, one on digital advertising, and then on downloads. As Ian Olman and my staff said, if you go and buy a DVD, you pay a tax. If you go to Best Buy and, or Target and buy a DVD, but if you download it, you don't. And a lot of these companies, and we're talking the big ones, the Googles, the Facebooks, the Amazons, I mean, the list, you know, we know who those big five or big 10 are. So one of those two legislation is the first in the nation. Now, a number of states are already pursuing it. We expected these large corporations to try to test it in court. So I would love to say we're absolutely going to win, but I can't make that promise. I'm not on, in the court system. I'm optimistic. Before it was introduced, a lot of constitutional lawyers were met with to talk about whether it was legal, whether it skirted the Interstate Commerce Commission and Interstate Commerce Clause. And there were enough lawyers, smart lawyers, national lawyers, who said, this is within the purview of the state to do. So there've been other variations on that theme in the past. How long will it be in courts? Who knows? I think that one tax, under consideration, is about $100 million a year brings in. So can we make that up and still go ahead with Kerwin? Absolutely. Right now, the, the Kerwin or the Bridge to Excellence is funded for the first four or five years. We have enough money put aside in the lockbox that can't be touched to fund it. This would put some debt in that. But we also have some other taxes we can consider. And as many of you know, there are a lot of corporate corporations that use a lot of loopholes and what I call scams to avoid paying taxes in our state. A third of our largest corporations pay zero corporate income tax, because they incorporate subsidiaries in Delaware, Nevada, or, or Idaho, I think, or North Dakota. And then they, they subvert their expenses to these subsidiaries, and they show up with a balance sheet of zero money, when in fact, their subsidiaries are making money because of the same parent company. We're losing about $100 million a year on that. And we have a solution called combined reported. And that bill's in front of budget tax and is still being considered. So we need some backup plans. Hopefully, we, we win the lawsuit. But it will be held, held up in court for some period of time. And, and there are, there are two taxes, as I mentioned. The digital downloads is fine. It's, the one is about the advertising tax. So, and, and we passed a law a few years ago to do what's called the Wayfair Act, to deal with third parties like Wayfair. And we do collect revenue from that. Okay, look, ladies and gentlemen, I said we keep it short. It's been a little over an hour. I think it's, it's fair to try to keep these tight, and it is a Saturday, and apparently very cold, so dress warmly. You can always call our office, and if you want to follow certain pieces of legislation, or get a report, please email or call the office. Ian Olman is my chief of staff. Susan Kivoga is my community relations, my scheduler, my Jill of all trades, opposed to a Jack of all trades. And they do a great job. So I want to thank all of you for taking an hour out. We're working hard to try to get through this. And I do see some light at the end of the tunnel. Hopefully, by the summer, we'll get closer to whatever normal is, or the new normal. You know, I, I, we've been joined by a number of local town officials. I see the mayor of University Parkland, Carrie. I see Anna Jordan from the Council of Greenbelt, and there are probably others. But I keep having to shift screens. So if I leave someone out, I apologize. With that, please let's stay in touch. Email, call. Be safe, stay healthy, and take care of yourself. So thank you for joining us today.